I'd like to welcome everyone today to our Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole meeting, April 2nd, 2024. I'm Councilwoman Pam Carter. All council members are here. We are going to excuse Jennifer. Patty's doing Jennifer's job. We welcome Crystal, who, Crystal's doing Patty's job. So we're all good today. So the first thing I need is approval of the minutes for the committee of the whole, March 5th, 2024. Oh my goodness. Did you turn my timer on?
I'm sorry.
It's time to start, Pam. Okay, so I need approval of the minutes for March 5th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve the minutes of March 5th, 2024.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Can we all say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Perfect. Okay, so now we're on to discussion item number one. Power Department Quarterly Report with our very famous Greg Bellon presenting.
I got Matt here with me.
Oh, and Matt Young.
There are two chairs. We're gonna use them. Well, Councilman Mayor thinks we're letting this come in and talk to you. Just a little update about, our quarterly update is what it's called, but thought we'd go through a few slides. And first off, there we go. We'll get it here. Promise we'll get it. If not, well, we might just be...
There you go.
Is it going? There we go. Now we gotta go backwards. There we go. Let's look at it on my screen. We'll look up there. How's that? All right, there we are. See how green we are? Green. So anyway, we've talked about UAMs in the past, but just wanted to give you a little, a little more. We've got, you know, a few new people on the council, so UAMs was formed back in 1980. You know, it was all our electric services. Fifty members, seven states, and there are sixteen projects that are UAMs focused, nonprofit, and we kind of get to control our own destiny with UAMs. They look at our long-term planning, exploring resources, and optimizing our existing resources. So that's kind of the vision of UAMs right now. So here's the UAMs projects that, the ones in red are the ones that we are in right now. So we're in Hunter. San Juan is, it's retired, so there's still some wrap-up costs that we're dealing with there, but it's all but done. IPP project that we're...
With San Juan also coal?
Yes. Yeah, coal-fired down in the Four Corners area. And we'll just kind of go down. We have a Craig-Mona, which is a transmission line between Craig and Mona, which we're a part of. And we're part of the Pool Resource Project, GPA, which is our government and public affairs, and member services project. So, and then, so we've got, in the firm power supply, we're in the Red Mesa. We have about five megawatts of solar from Red Mesa. And then Sunnyside is, it's a waste coal. It's a three-year contract that we went into to kind of help get us a little more baseload. So we're probably, how many months are we into that? Probably a year, maybe?
To find waste coal.
Ah, so it's coal, so it's coal that isn't normally put through, used for generation, but they, they have this plant that they can actually use lower-grade coal to produce electricity with. So it's a different avenue for us to get a few more megawatts on our system, so.
And how many did you say it was?
It's a three-year contract, so.
But how many megawatts are we getting?
I think that one is, is it ten? I can't remember. Ten megawatts. So if that one will go up, that'll be, we're less than three years into that one. So, but just one of our avenues to kind of give us some resources while we're looking at others.
And which one is that? Greg, I missed.
Oh, so that one is Sunnyside. So that's right. I don't have a pointer, but it's...
Oh, okay.
There we go. So it's a, it's a waste coal product, a project that we're in.
So that's new, because I'm not familiar with it.
Yes, that's fairly new. Correct. So that kind of gives us an idea where we're at. And this is, is the pie chart of the different resources that UAMs has. And we'll go through and kind of relate it back to Murray now, so.
So before you relate to Murray?
Yes.
Why so few wind? One wind project.
So they have two wind projects right now. They have Pleasant Valley Wind, and so Pleasant Valley, and also Horsebeet Wind. And so, and those are ones they developed themselves. And so, and they're looking at expanding the Horsebeet Wind. I don't know if we'll be able to bite into that, because I think everyone that's in that will probably take out, expand. But they know that we're interested if there's any, any extra leftover. But it's, I guess the hardest part about wind is it's just developing, it's expensive and hard to get. So you have to take up quite a bit of property, and you have to go and, you know, get landowners to agree to it, and then the project. But I don't know if they have any new, other than expanding, so.
Which is the Idaho project?
That is, well, that's Horsebeet.
Is that Horsebeet?
Yes. So, and they're also looking at some geothermal right now. So we'll, let's just, so this is kind of our resource breakdown. If you look at the one on the right, so we have about twenty-nine percent of our, is, our resources are hydro between CRSP and our home five megawatts at the canyon. We're twenty-one percent coal, natural gas, that's our generation. Then we purchase sometimes thirty-five percent on the open market. Lantern gas, about eight percent, and our solar is about three percent. But we're looking at bolstering our solar. We're looking at another project. And so, it kind of gives you the usage back breakdown on the other side there, on the left side. So we're trying to, I, we have a, we have a fairly diverse portfolio, I believe. And it's, it's one that we're working on every day to, you know, try to make a little greener, a little better. But it's, it's a, it's a struggle, trying to make sure you have enough baseload, enough, trying to get enough, you know, the resources that we are looking to, you know, they're a little greener. So it's something we're always looking at, though. But I think, I'm pretty proud of the portfolio that's been put together over the last thirty years. So we're better, we're better than most. We might not be as good as some, but we're better than most, how that, so.
It'd be better if there was less coal and more solar.
I agree.
I know.
We're working on it. We're working on it.
Hey, but we've got a little conflict generating right now.
It's one megawatt?
Yes. It's, yes, so we're, we're seventy-five K W today. So, and I can talk, we'll talk to that real quick. So Unit 1 didn't run last year. So we got some, a new manager in, Chris Neiman, and he, they got a company up there, and they started looking at things. And so they were able to take a part off of Unit 2, put on Unit 1, start it up, and it's been running ever since. And so we've got the replacement part ordered. And so we're ready to, we should have both turbines up and running as soon as we get the water. So, yeah, it was, it was unfortunate that we didn't have Unit 1 last year, but that's, that's water under the bridge, so to speak. Sorry, no pun intended, I promise. But we're looking forward to a really good year. There's a lot of water up in the mountains that we know about, and so we're excited about a new hydro year for us. So we'll keep you posted on that. But Unit 1 is up and running. It's been running, gosh, probably three weeks now, at least, so.
A month.
Let's see. So here's kind of our challenges. So you're, I mean, we're always looking for low or no-carbon resources. Transmission is always a problem when it comes to, you know, getting, and that's, and that's the other thing. You look at transmission lines and where you can build solar, or not solar, I mean solar, but wind. And then you look at how we balance our resources, because you have to have a baseload. And then the energy supply chain is getting a little crazy right now. We've got an RFP coming up for our central substation transformers. I'm a little bit nervous as to how far out they're gonna be, because we just had an order of transformers that were supposed to be delivered in about a week or two, and they got pushed out to November. And so it makes it a little, little dicey. That was, that was probably, I would imagine, there's transformers in that have been for projects, but also we have just into our inventory, because, you know, we're trying to bolster our inventory for that very reason, because I think now, they used to quote fifty-two weeks, and they said they're gonna be more like eighty weeks out for transformers. So that's crazy. That's just, I was talking to Russ today, and he goes, let's get our transformers ordered, for his project, you know? I mean, so we've got a lot, we're working, we're trying to get, trying to get a handle on some of those things, but we don't have any control over that, which is, which is hard.
What do we attribute it to?
It seems like it all started back in COVID, and it's just never caught back up. And then I, I think Electrify America kind of contributed to that in a way, because, I mean, you got people starting, well, it's like anything. Once something starts to become scarce, and everybody starts to go out and purchase and start, not hoarding, but I guess that's probably a pretty good word. I mean, we would hoard. We're trying to hoard if we can. So we're all in the same boat. So we're all going after these transformers that are hard to get right now. So, but we're, we have a, we have a fairly good stock. But yeah, I just, we're trying our best there. So, and we, we went out and ordered more when we found out. But yeah, they just keep getting pushed back a little bit here and there. So we'll keep you posted on that. But for now, I think we're pretty good. We're okay. We do have a transformer for the theater, so we're good.
We got lots of insight.
That's another inside joke. But anyway, so this is one of the, one of the projects we're looking at. It's Fremont Solar Project. So it comes with solar and storage, which is pretty awesome, because, so what happens is, you know, once the sun goes down, and that's kind of when our peak hits, we can have a battery option that will go in probably from two to four hours into our peak. And so that's, that's awesome. That's pretty huge. I was just up at Heber the other day, and they put a one-megawatt battery backup on their system, and they love it. It was expensive, but it's something I want to go up and look at and see if that would work somewhere in our system. We could put it in one of our substations. What that does is it just extends into, into the peak. And so it's like a resource, it's like bringing a resource on. So it's, it's, it'll be interesting to go talk to them in depth and see if it would be something we could look at.
How big are those?
Oh, they said it's about, it's like a storage or shipping container size. Like a small shipping container. So for one megawatt. And, but talking to Jason Orland up there, he's their director, and they, they really like it. They've got some bugs that are working out. It's brand new. And I, I think it might be the first one in, in our area that I know of, at least. So at that, at that scale.
For the UAMs?
At that scale, yeah. They're part of UAM, so.
Yeah. Who's Fremont? That's awesome.
Fremont.
Iron County.
North of Piragona there.
There we go. If you know where that's at, good for you.
Which is down by...
Oh, Iron County.
North of, north of Cedar City.
Yeah, exactly. It's like a half hour north of Cedar City.
I live in my bubble here in Murray.
I'm with you there. So, but that one we're excited about. Our entitlement's ten megawatts.
Oh, wow.
So that would be twenty-twenty-six, or twenty-eight.
So they're looking at, they're looking at two right now. They're narrowing it down to two different, they've got two they're looking at, and it'll be narrowed down to one. But I think this is the one that's gonna go forward, but it's still not completely, they haven't signed everything yet. So, but it's twenty, yeah, I can't read that.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. Twenty-five. There it is. It's in the grass. So, it's in the green grass. So geothermal, this is another one we're looking at. We have five megawatt, just under five megawatts on this one. And there are two locations in Winnebago and Fallon. And if you don't know where Winnebago is, I can't tell you.
I do.
You know where that is?
Everybody. You gotta call the arm gamble.
So that one is...
Is this replacing another plant there in Winnebago?
No. Well, this would be new to us. This would be a new geothermal plant for UAMs.
Oh.
So this is a new project, and it might be one that's, yeah, I, it seems like there is one geothermal that they're expanding, and that might be one of these that they're looking at. But it'll be new to UAMs, so.
So shiny and new.
I know. It looks good, doesn't it?
Does it have the price tag still with it?
Yeah, so we're, so we're excited about this project as well.
When does that one go online?
Well, that one is, yeah, backwards. Come on, we'll go, there we go.
Twenty-five years?
So twenty-twenty-seven.
Twenty-one.
So that'd be the commercial operation dates, and that's probably depending on where the location is. So, and then we're just looking at gas, natural gas generation. They'd like to build a new plant. And so they're, they're looking into that. And we would have an entitlement, so that would come out of the study entitlement would be six point four percent of whatever the plant's, so if it's a two-hundred-megawatt plant, we'd get six percent of that. So, so that's just another, that's another, and this one...
It's solar and natural gas, is that what I'm reading?
That is one of their options, yes. So, one of the sites is solar and natural gas. So that'd be, that'd be another good option for us. So, but we definitely need to start looking at replacements for our coal units. Probably, probably, we're hoping at least another ten years with our Hunter plant.
The legislature is not being helpful.
No, they're not.
Amen, Diane. Amen.
So with Hunter, what is Rocky Mountains' announcement yesterday due to Hunter?
Um, yeah, that was, Doug just told us about that. It's ten to forty, wait, no, it was...
It's twenty-fourty-two.
Yeah. I mean, if they, yeah, that'd be interesting.
Shooting for.
I don't know if that'll ever, I don't know if that'll ever happen, but I mean, that's, that's in their, at least that's in their, that's their long-term planning.
Better.
Yeah. I think, I, if we can get thirty-two, that'd be, that'd be great for us, because hopefully by then we can transition into...
Hunter's been, Hunter's been like topic of conversation since I've been on the council, since I've joined the council. So it's pretty interesting.
The night, the good thing about Hunter is we have no, if the debt's paid for on that plant. And so it's one of our least expensive resources. But then the coal issue, it doesn't help us out very well when they can't get coal. And so it turns it into a middle-of-the-road resource for us as far as cost. But if we had, if they had a coal supply, that, that's just a really good, it's, it'd run well, it's, yeah, it's, it meets our needs. But yeah, so as long as we can get the coal issue solved, and if we could go to twenty-thirty-two, that'd be awesome. So we're hoping for that.
Any questions for? How much do we pay per megawatt at Hunter?
It could be thirty-five when it's running really good, and kind of more like in mid-forties otherwise. So it's still good, still good. But, do you have any doubts, Matt? Do you have any questions for our department?
The solar project that we're running on, not the Red Mesa, but there's the other one?
Yes.
What is that?
That was twenty-six. That was the one that we couldn't read. Twenty-twenty-six.
I'm just having short-term.
No, that's okay.
Red Mesa was already in life, right?
Yes, yeah. That one's up and running.
And we're buying more when they expand it?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, that's, we like that one down there. I really, so we talked about the area down there, the Navajo Reservation. I mean, they have people, they have, they have, there's US citizens that do not have electricity.
I know.
Which is, to me, just doesn't make sense whatsoever. And so I will be participating in that again this year, and thank God for the support there, because I think it's important.
Wasn't there an article written about that area just recently?
Yeah, I believe there was. So, yeah, yeah. And they're trying, they're trying to get it to move forward faster, which I think would be amazing every week. So we'll do our small part, but I think it's gonna take more than, than that. But to me, it's like...
Let's go. How many, how many people received electricity last year? Who?
I mean, what the group did, although a huge group.
No, I mean, it was...
Couple hundred.
Couple hundred, yeah, it was in the...
Which, which was impressive to them.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
It was real.
Because the challenge down there to, to build, they're so dispersed, the homes are so dispersed, that they're building miles of lines just to serve one customer. So...
Yeah.
But they were, yeah, they were so thankful. I, I wasn't down there when, but when they got to actually turn a light on for someone, I guess the territory did swell. Their emotions were there, and just, you know, it's like, so they didn't have to go get ice every day to keep something cool. So it's like, they got refrigeration now, and they got running water, whatever. I mean, it just, to me, it just, it's heartbreaking.
Makes me appreciate when your power goes out for about fifteen minutes, and you've got complaints.
Yeah, right, for sure.
That, in this age, maybe shouldn't happen, but when you see what they've gone through, it's not much.
We're trying to keep the lights on the best we can, but we appreciate your, your support. You guys are awesome. So thank you.
Always here. The lights are always on for you.
Thanks.
I think it's, oh, the light on. That's what someone said to me when I was in the room.
Okay, so, oh, my council.
Go ahead.
I just have to ask. So IPP.
Yes.
Where, do you know what's happening with that? I mean, is that on hold? Is it gonna...
That's your question.
I just, I know you don't have to ask.
I've heard, no, I, I, and I, I don't, I've, I've heard that there's gonna be possibly, possibly a legislative session that's, session to help iron some things out. That's all I know at this point.
Do you know what those things are that need to be ironed out? Do you have any sense of that?
Well, I mean, I have to be careful what I say here, so.
Yeah. You don't wanna put your...
Politically, correctly answer would be, there's a lot. But I, I've said it before. I mean, to me, it's like, I feel like we're losing control of something that is run very, very well. And it's an asset that has, the management is amazing, the coal plant is amazing. They mean, it's, to me, it's like, they're fighting over...
They're making an issue where none exists.
Yeah, in my mind, it's just, it's just a political, it's just a totally political issue. And hopefully someone cooler heads can prevail, and something, something can be done to right the ship there. But...
Yeah, I was so disappointed that the governor signed it. Me too.
I'm with you, Diane.
Just, I don't know. It's not like he wasn't educated.
No, 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 he was. But, but also, I mean, you gotta look at the legislature. They, they passed it.
I know.
Right? So I mean...
Well, I don't, I'm done a lot.
No. So enough to sit on that subject. And we, we appreciate being with you today, so.
Okay, so Greg.
So, we definitely would like to set up times and we'll get with Jennifer and Patty. We'd love to have you come, whatever, and come see our dispatch center, or our central control, sorry. It's not dispatch center. Central control, so you can see what our central control operators are doing on a daily basis, helping to keep, you know, trying to save us money and schedule power. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty awesome. And see our generation plan, and then maybe up to the hydro. And then maybe, maybe one day we'll make it up to IPP together, so.
Yes.
Okay.
And your new offices. Thank you, Greg.
Their new office.
We sat in our chairs today.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have our reports from the 2024 National League of Cities Congressional Conference, and we will start with Councilmember Adam Hock to go first, and then Councilwoman Zalba Dominguez will go last. Go ahead.
It felt like the conference just, a lot of emphasis on President Biden's infrastructure plan, and just a lot of emphasis on getting grants for those things. That there's a lot of that money supposed to go down to the municipalities. So I just think it's a good reminder for us, as we're looking at any kind of infrastructure plan, to look for federal grants, because that was a huge, like, I think of the four sessions I went through, three of them all dealt with that topic. And it just kept coming up again and again and again. But there's a lot of money for us.
And when will that be, the, it's now?
Now.
It's now that?
Yeah. I saw, I got an email just today from National Leagues with a whole list of federal grants that are coming due in the next...
These are the big ones.
Yeah, over the next few weeks. So there's, there's a lot that they can do. So, so I, you'll probably push off of that more. That was, that was the big thing.
And I know each department, Doug, Mayor, they do their grants. And, because I read something in one of your emails, Doug, that talked about a grant, I think it was landscaping? I, oh, yes, landscaping. So I know that each department had, through Doug, Mayor, they write grants for a lot of these projects, that they don't have to spend the taxpayers' money. They'd rather have the grant money be paid for those things. So, yeah. Okay, so Zalba, you're next.
So I just put this into a little PowerPoint, and these are some of the sessions I went over. So I attended the Youth Delegates Workshop, From Passion to Policy: Developing Ordinances and Community Change. Some of the key takeaways were youth were able to learn, key city players in developing relationships, and tangible asks for their cities. Some of their ideas included dog parks with more, with more families owning dogs at fifty-eight percent in relation to population, and lack of family growth. This was from a Utah, I think it, she was Miss Utah that presented this in, in that session. It was pretty interesting why, and she had all these stats. It was pretty cool. Some of the other ones are skate parks with lessons, community pools, and some of the hotter climate areas, online libraries having some, that's not available to some areas, and safer walkways within their cities. And also, there is a huge emphasis in encouraging you to apply and ask to be on city boards, which I thought was really cool. And I don't know where we would fall into that here, but deep dive session, Building a Community-Centric Approach to Emergency Response Services. This was a really interesting, more grants, of course. But really, my biggest takeaway on this was from Greg Jackson and his story about how he was shot as an innocent bystander, and how that changed his perspective about gun safety. And there's different opportunities here in terms of different grants that are available, reducing violent crime and supporting law enforcement. You know, they gave out stats that homicide costs a city an average from four hundred thousand to two million dollars, just depending on what it is. And goals to improve services and support decrease gun violence. I know we do have, I don't know if we still have the library gun safety locks.
I think we do.
Yeah, yeah.
He's right there.
And just, you know, supporting that program and how it can be supportive. They gave some really interesting grants about suicide rates and how high they are. And because of that, even amongst youth and our elders. So that was pretty fascinating. Small cities and council meeting, again, they went over the infrastructure grant. Some of the grants are, I know we already participate in the Brandsville, the Burge Investment Program. I did ask, could it be a walkway? And they said, yes, it could be. So there's opportunities there. I'm sure you guys all know those, but those are some of the offerings that they have. One of the things is they do have training, and there's no cost for cities to select to participate in their program. So if there's a grant here that we're unaware of, the, the opportunity's there. I also participate in the Gila Hispanic Elected Locals Official Meeting and the LGBTQ plus meeting. The key takeaways on here was the workforce needs support in the following areas: childcare, after-school programs, support in multicultural communities, and we do a good job with expanding our languages here within the city. One out of five people experienced gun violence. Again, gun violence was a big takeaway at NLC this year. Create pathways to homeownership, support banks. This year, forty-two house members and eight senators are retiring, so the makeup of our congressional leaders will change. Encour, and I think there was one more the day that we met with congressional leaders as well.
That's not a lot, a lot.
Yeah, that, it's a huge, that's, that's, even when we met with our congressional leaders, they were surprised. They had one that day that announced from Colorado, so forty-three.
Seems like I've seen more.
Yeah. And encouraging you to vote, of course, and housing opportunities for low-income housing. And then the last day, we met with our congressional leaders. We just kind of did a whole day of just meeting.
We got, we got, yeah.
Yeah. No, we didn't go to Ramis.
We did one-on-ones with all the congressional...
We got with their staff.
We did do staff with Lee.
Yeah, we did staff with Lee, and we were able to meet with Congresswoman Celeste.
And staff with others, yeah.
And then staff with others, and then I spoke to, um, oh my gosh, what was his name? He's running for Senate, why can't I think of it?
Curtis.
Curtis. He called, he called, because they.